Well, anyway.
Tankless water heater?
Huh?
Yeah, those tankless water heaters?
Yeah, and I, it's excellent, but the snow and ice outside got in the way and so it didn't work. I called the guy, I didn't know that. Took him about five minutes to figure it out. I was worried it was something more serious than that.
That's why I don't like doing all the computers so much. Yeah, I kind of run it like, like my students, Aaron, get this, like, I try to do it so you try to read it back, like, in your calendar, be fresh. Sure.
Hi there.
Hey, Joel. Hey, how are you, Jerry?
How are you?
Hello? How are you?
Good thanks, how about you?
More or less okay.
Yeah.
I wasn't thrilled to look at the temperature and see all the snow this morning.
Oh, yeah.
And find out my water heater was on the blink and I didn't have any hot water.
Oh, that's not fun.
Other than that, everything's perfect.
Well, you could have fixed it, no?
Yeah. Turned out it wasn't too serious. The snow had piled up outside and got ice in the, what do you call it? Pipe bleeding outside anyhow away from it. Soon as that was cleaned out, we were fine.
I got the same issue I was saying about, I always thought it wasn't a wise idea, but it did. And then one day I had to call the electricians because something wasn't working. And sure enough, he comes in and he looks around and he takes the coat off the thing and then the bar goes all the way up.
Yeah.
Yeah, that cost me a hundred.
All right, apparent, apparently I've been told they can't hear me, so. Ready?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Before I call, Joel, I want to thank everyone for being here tonight, including those people who are attending remotely and for those who are watching on Channel 14 or streaming live. As noted at the top of the agenda, the governor has issued an executive order in March that allows the commission members to participate remotely. Tonight, Commission Member Steve Becker has called in. For those in attendance. Tonight, we have set up the room to meet CDC-recommended distancing guidelines and the executive order of the governor. The city has also made accommodations for the public to provide comments on the agenda items. With that, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission this February 16th. Roll call, please.
Becker?
Here.
McMahon?
Here.
O'Flaherty?
Here.
Klein?
Here.
Pena Graham?
Here.
Wright?
Here.
Chair Maxwell?
Here.
All present.
Before we move to the approval of the minutes, we've got something a little different tonight. We are going to be nominating and electing a vice chair. With that, I will ask the group to make nominations, if they would.
Anybody can nominate somebody else?
Okay, I nominate Bill.
Bill McMahon has been nominated by O'Flaherty. Seconded by Klein.
No second needed, but that's okay.
Sorry.
Then if there's any other nominations?
Yes. Anyone else? Okay. With that, the nominations are closed. May I have a second motion? Or I'm sorry? Do you want to second that?
Aye.
Can you, I did, I, I did it out of order, can you second the nomination? Any discussions? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
With that, I'll move to the approval of the agenda, if there are any deletions or additions.
I move approval.
Moved by Klein.
I second.
Seconded by O'Flaherty. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This is the public participation portion of the program. If there's anyone that is...
Approve the minutes, January 19th first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped them. Look for approval of the minutes for the January 19th meeting.
I move to approve the minutes for the January 19th meeting, as submitted.
So moved, seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded by Wright? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Now, public participation portion of the meeting, for anyone that is, would like to speak to anything that is not on the agenda tonight, come forward, state your name and your address, if not. We'll move to new business. First order is a public hearing on a petition by DeKalb County Community School District 428 requesting an amendment to the site plan approved by ordinance 2020-015, which approved a special use permit for a private therapeutic day school on the subject site located at 900 East Garden Street, formerly Cheeseboro Elementary School.
Tammy Carson with the school district is participating via Zoom and she'll have a presentation.
Okay.
Go ahead, Tammy.
Thank you, Dan. With the renovations at Cheeseboro, we are looking to move a therapeutic day school, menta group into the location. And to do so, we are looking to add a circle or loop parking spaces in the front of the building off of Garden Street, which have not been there in the past. It will primarily be used for the district staff members who will also be housed in that building. There are five district staff members who'll be working there five days a week. And then also for parking related to Barb Food Mart that is moving in also. And information regards to the traffic impact is listed as before. All, all other traffic for Garden Street, when it was a school, was handled on Garden Street and in the back of the building. And the students and staff that'll be attending at menta will actually enter off of the back of the building off of Taylor and use the parking lot off of Taylor Street rather than the front parking lot. So it will have limited traffic in the front. Any questions I could answer?
Well...
Well, yeah.
I'll go through the report first.
Yeah, staff report, please.
Yeah, you have a staff report and Tammy went over the generally request. So in 20, about a year ago, the council approved and it went through the commission. You approved a, the city approved an ordinance approving a special use permit for the school, for the therapeutic day school, for the menta group at the subject site. At that time, there was a, no particular plan approved with it. There was some conditions regarding improvements the school district would have to make in order for the menta group to move forward. The, and Tammy's explained what the change is, they're adding a access drive one way along East Garden Street on the north side of the building with 10 bay parking spaces with a handicap space. The menta group's a non-for-profit social service organization, serves students with special needs that require varying levels of therapeutic support. So the school district in the past has reached out to the menta group to open a facility in the city. They'll be using a portion of the building, as I explained, there'll be some, about to five district staff members also in here and the Barb Food Mart will be relocating over here too from Huntley Middle School. And this was all mentioned at the, during the hearing last March. Temporarily, menta is using some space at the Pens Point Market on East Lincoln Highway for about eight to 10 students in person and 25 remotely. So they are in town using some space over there. Due to COVID, there was a delay in moving into this facility with that, so that they're coming back. They did put a new roof on the school building last summer and they have some, did submit plans, which I showed you for the, Jeff can bring up the plans again. So you see the aerial here of the school. So they're adding a one-way drive on the north side of the site. Right now, it's just served by a sidewalk. And the main access is off of Taylor Street, you can see on the south. So the building's been closed since 2011. Again, the menta group's going to use about 80% of the building. This one shows the north and south improvements. This is a school here. North is up Garden Street with the one lane or one-way access with the 10 parking spaces. And they're going to partially resurface the back lot too that exists off of Taylor Street. So they're going to relocate Barb Food Mart, have about up to five district staff members, have offices inside here. All bus traffic, all student drop-offs will occur off of Taylor Street, not off Garden Street. So there'll be no buses off Garden, no student drop-offs, all that will occur off of Taylor Street. So that's one thing to note. We had a condition in the 20, the ordinance from last year that they had to do some improvements to the parking lot and put appropriate signage, screen the trash dumpster, improve the sidewalks around the building if they needed that. So they come back with plans showing those items being done as required by the UDO and the accessibility code. On the north side of this site there, and I did include some, this is from Google Street View, so this is, I think, a year and a half ago, but shows a little better now. The red Xs there show that there's going to, four trees are going to have to be removed on that north side of the site to get the drive and the parking in. 11 trees will be saved, so the X shows, indicates where the trees will be. There's two small ones and two larger ones that will have to be removed to get that in there. So again, no bus parking, no bus drop-off, no student drop-off, just for some of the patrons of the food mart and some of the district staff members will be using that and visitors to the menta group. They are also looking, we had our city engineer review this, they're going to add a fire service line to the building and a new fire hydrant just southwest of the building, so that'd be part of the improvements on the property. So they're bringing up to more of the code and the regulations in the UDO and getting a good use in the building. Roughly about 60 to 80 students will be using the facilities K through 12, the hours are mentioned in there. Also, there was a brief, little traffic impact analysis done, giving a little background of the use of the building. So twice a week, Wednesdays and Thursdays, and two Sundays a month, there'll be about 68 food mart volunteers at the school. They'll park on the south side of the building off of Taylor. Barb Food Mart is open once a week, Thursdays from about 3:30 to 6:30. Some patrons will either use the north or south side. Anticipating, most volunteers and shoppers will use the parking off East Taylor. Some may use the parking off Garden Street, particularly if there's a handicap space needed. There'll be occasional, about twice a week, a box truck delivering things to the Barb Food Mart. They will access that one-way drive off East Garden. They also indicated there'll be occasional visitors who may use both entrances. Traffic on the weekends will be very limited to the location. And as mentioned, and as a condition of the recommendation, there'll be no student drop-offs or bus traffic along the access drive from East Garden. All school buses and student drop-off will use East Taylor. We did receive one citizen response form, that was from Connie and Steve Boyden of 821 Roosevelt Court. They live just directly west in the duplex here. And they just had a comment about the access off East Garden, what it was going to be used for, and stormwater. I guess there's some water runoff to their property now. So I did call, talked to both, sent them the plans that showed the access drive, there's going to be a stormwater drainage. That's in your packet, but there's a, there it is. The blue lines show here, there's storm inlets in the parking area and they'll take all the rainwater and take it to the east in the park. So there's going to be no water flow direct to the west, so. After our conversations, the Boydens were pleased with the response of, and once they found out more information about it, so. Copy is provided in your packet. So the recommendation is to approve, there's a sample motion presented in the staff report that approves Exhibit A, which is a plan that shows the access, the new access and parking on the north and the reconstruction of the parking lot and part of it on the south. Also, the floor plan, which does show the trash enclosure, meeting our UDO requirements. So those specific plans are approved as exhibits. Condition, as I mentioned, no student drop-off and bus traffic along East Garden. And also a kind of repeat condition from the ordinance a year ago that they have to restripe the parking lot, do other improvements as they show in the plans, Exhibits A and B. That's all I have. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Dan. At this point, if there's anybody from the public that would like to speak to this issue, please come forward, state your name and your address.
I just have a question.
Come up to the mic.
Please come up to the podium, yeah, if you could come up to the podium. It's okay.
Okay, so I'm Frank Lucas and I live at 405 South Ninth and we've lived there for 30-some years or better. So my concern is, of course, the parking lot in the front, because living there so long and our kids went to school there, I don't know, is if I really want to see a park, you know, I like walking and going there and seeing the trees and I don't know if I want to see a parking lot in the front of the building. 10 spaces seem like a lot. I mean, it seems like the parking and the drive is going to take up that whole front yard in front of the school. I mean, that's pretty big. And the parking lot in the back is pretty big and I know, they're really, when it was a school, you know, parents would drive up along the road, drop their kids, they'd get out and walk up to school or they'd walk around the back. So there's really never been a lot of traffic from that building in the front.
Well...
Everybody always came through the back and walked up to the office, which was up in the front, which, that's just the way it always was.
True.
So my concern is how this is going to look and you're taking the trees away. Are they replacing any trees for the trees they take away?
I don't think there's any new trees there, maybe Tammy Cars can respond, but I think they're, they're saving about 11 trees, four are going to be removed to get that access drive. But I think they want to add, and Tammy can follow up, they want to add that access along Garden Street to provide that limited parking and access. It's a controlled entrance in the front there, so that's what, for security measures, they want to make sure that the people going through there are handled that way. I don't know if Tammy could respond back.
And to reiterate, it is one-way, correct?
Tammy, could you go a little bit more of the reason to add the access off Garden?
Yes, actually, there had been concerns shared from other community members also regarding the Garden Street parking that they didn't want to have a lot of street parking out there, so there's concerns both ways. We did want to make sure we had handicapped accessibility to the front entrance of the building, especially for some of the Barb Food Mart patrons that attend the Barb Food Mart night. And that will allow it, since the Barb Food Mart will be located on the north side of that building, so it'll be close to the main entrance. The 10 spots of those 10, one of them is handicapped and then the five, five district staff members that will be working there, we are typically there on a daily basis and we'll be using five of those other spots, which just leave a couple others for visitors for us or for the menta academy and the event. Because the building will also be fully secured. Back in the day, before Cheeseboro closed, many of our doors were not left locked during the typical school day and current conditions are that we do have our building locked down at all times. And so to enter that building, they would either have to have an employee swipe badge or be buzzed in at the front door. So again, that is another reason we're looking to have some spots near that front door so that we have, we are able to view who is coming in and then they would be forced to come to the front door and be buzzed in by the office staff near that entrance. And in question to the trees, we actually, before this project was even considered for approval, we were looking to actually have to cut down some of those trees because of the disease in the trees and the condition of them. Some of them are needed to be removed, so we at this time are not planning to replace the four that are coming down with the construction of the parking lot.
Okay, so what is it going to look like? Like, so if you've got the parking lot where there is, is there still going to be grass then? Or are you taking, are you parking lotting the whole thing?
Oh, now, Dan, would you be able to put up that drawing of the north layout plan?
Yeah, Jeff, could you get the site plan back up?
If you notice on, actually, the, I was actually looking for the drawing, there we go.
This will be all green and here.
This, this, right, the white center in between the drive will still be grass. We still plan to have the sign out front, it may have some upgrades to it, but the sign that's currently on the street, as well as the sidewalk that goes from end to end, will still be there. We'll be also adding sidewalk around the edge of that parking lot, as you can see in this drawing, that takes you to the front door and to the sidewalks that lead to the back of the building.
So the drive is about 17 feet wide, I believe. And there's a sidewalk right next to it about eight feet. So the drive's in the tan or the darker area, that's the parking here. And then there's a walkway that'd be right alongside that, up to the door and along this side too.
Okay.
But this will be all green in the middle and on the sides.
Okay, what is the Barb Food Mart?
The Barb Food Mart is a food pantry that's open to any of our DeKalb School District families that are in need of assistance with food and it's currently located at Huntley Middle School. It's been in existence since approximately 2012, I believe, maybe 2013. And we are looking to move that over to Cheeseboro to allow more space at Huntley Middle School for our students and staff.
Okay. And then I assume that you're going to unboard all the windows?
Oh, absolutely. We will be doing quite a bit of renovations. After this meeting, I'll be taking a proposal to the school board for a renovation project of over $2 million for this building, which includes replacing all of the windows and doors. The boarding up is actually, because of the vandalism, we had so many broken windows and doors over there, we did board it up. Those will all be coming down and be replaced with all new doors and windows, as well as other new upgrades around the outside of the building, as well as a significant amount inside.
Okay, is the ball diamond stain where it is?
It is. It is at this time.
And then what about the bricks? Are you familiar with the bricks that we paid for and donated when the, when we put the playground out there? When the playground was there, there're supposed to be bricks?
Barbling?
For barbland?
No, they took, well, I don't know, but they, there were bricks out there when they took up the gym, not the gym, the playground equipment? There were bricks. And everybody who built that or people that had kids in the school donated the bricks?
If it was related to the playground, that was actually property that's managed by the, owned and managed by the Park District, not the school district. So I would have to check with the Park District to what happened with those bricks when the barbland was removed.
Okay, yeah, because they were supposed to be, they were supposed to be put back in the front and made like a pathway out in the front of the school. And they, they never were, that number was done.
I can follow up with the Park District on that. I, I'm not familiar with that at all, so I'd have to ask questions of them. And I, I don't know exactly what happened when it was taken down and where those might be, but I'd be happy to follow up with them.
Okay, because that might be something that you guys could put in the grassland and kind of...
Sure. We can definitely look at options for that, once I find out exactly what might, what have happened with that.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
I think that's all, do we have any other questions? Nope, we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other comments, I will close the public hearing and open it up to discussion. Any comments or questions from the commission?
Tammy, what is the relationship between the, the school district and the people running the academy? Are you, is, is this a rental agreement? Do you have any other vested interests with the academy?
We have no vested connection with them. We have been sending students, we have enrolled students with menta or core academy, as it's called, out of Aurora for some time now and have been busing students to Aurora in the past. And so we're looking to be able to, with menta opening a facility at our Cheeseboro Elementary, that those students are potentially going to be, be able to be moved back to DeKalb and not have to be bused to Aurora for the services that they're receiving. And the, we are looking at the lease agreement that will be approved, going up for approval with our Board of Education tonight.
And Tammy, I think you mentioned last year, the vast majority of the students are currently in the DeKalb School District, right? Or do you take some from other school districts?
We, they can, they, it's a tuition-based program, so any school district can opt to send their students to Menta Academy. There is a large portion of students, I want to say, at the time, it was approximately 30 to 40 students that we'd be looking to send to that program. And it, we're planning to be able to house approximately 80 to 100 as a capacity level. But at this point, like I say, we're going to be moving our students and that number's around 30 to 40, but it will be opened up to other school districts should they want to bus their students to DeKalb location.
What, what is the, you know the number of staff members for the academy?
I don't know that I have that information at the tip of my fingers right now, to be honest with you. Dan, do you remember back from last year's proposal?
Yeah, the last year, it said 25 staff members, that's in the staff report. That's off the documents from last year, so, and there was no change in that number, right?
No, nothing's changed since last year.
So that, so the parking for the staff is going to be in the back, the Taylor side, right?
For the menta staff, yes.
Yes.
The menta staff will park in the back, that's where their buses and, and actually, when I say buses, that's a pretty loose term. Most of their students receive transportation in smaller vehicles, sometimes like a taxi service or a busing service, or excuse me, a van service versus a, you won't see full-size buses coming and going from there.
Okay. And the, the Calb staff, about five of you guys, right? So that means five, the, the other parking spaces on the Garden side would be visitor parking?
Correct, visitor. I will be one of the staff that'll be located there. And occasionally, we do have salespeople, as well as some of our employees from our department that will be coming by to meet with us. So that's what those other spaces will be for.
And I did hear you say that the large part of developing those spaces was to get parking off the street, right? There was concern with that last time, right?
Yes, there have been neighbors' expressed concerns about street traffic and street parking if we did not add this drop-off area, this parking area, excuse me.
And when, when do you anticipate the core coming into the facility after renovations and everything is done?
Our, our construction project is slated to start on March 8 and continue until July 15. On July 15, they would then be moving in with opening in August for their programs and students.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just out of curiosity, what is the duration of the lease?
It's a five-year lease with the option to renew for three additional years.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, if not, I'll ask for motion.
I'll do it. Based on the submitted petition and testimony presented, I move the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to the City Council approval of the amended site plan approved by ordinance 2020-015 in order to add an access drive from East Garden Street, a 10 pace, a 10-space parking lot on the north side of the building, and other improvements as shown on the site plans dated 1/19/21, labeled as Exhibit A, three sheets, prepared by Arc Design Resources, Inc. And the floor plan/dumpster enclosure plan dated 1/19/21, labeled as Exhibit B, prepared by Richard L. Johnson Architects, as provided in the staff report, and subject to the following conditions. One, there shall be no student drop-off or bus traffic along the access drive from East Garden Street. All school bus and student drop-off shall occur along the south side of the subject site off East Taylor Street. And two, the petitioner shall restripe the parking lot, resurface the sidewalks, replace the parking lot signage, screen the trash dumpster, provide a new fire service line and fire hydrant in compliance with the municipal code, and as shown on Exhibits A and B.
So motion by O'Flaherty, second by Wright, roll call.
Becker?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
O'Flaherty?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Pena Graham?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Chair Maxwell?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tammy.
The second item tonight is a public hearing, a petition by Midland Trust Company requesting approval of the zoning, of a zoning map amendment to the HI High Heavy Industrial District to the PDI Planned Development Industrial District, and the first amendment to the north side of Gerler Road, approximately 500 square feet east of South First Street. And did you say someone was going to be joining us?
Jim Planey with Midland is on Zoom, along with Bill French with Sunvest Solar. I think Jim will be talking first. Go ahead, Jim.
Yes, it's changed the zoning, adding the PD1 is helpful to us in, in our marketing. It, it gives us an increase of higher use and still gives us the opportunity for the heavy industrial as that area is zoned. I think also in the long term, if we could do some solar here, as we discussed with Bill French and Sunvest, anything that is the development that would be approved by planning and zoning, hopefully would lead towards, if not doing looping water, working towards looping water. There's a lot of First Street and Gerler Road distance, and we don't know if, depending on the development, if we could loop it or not. But by having a higher use, we have a better shot at reaching a long-term plan for looping the water. That's, that's my feeling right there. I think Dan would agree with that. But not too much is changing with our request here to add PD1 on it, on the zoning.
And I'll ask for a staff presentation unless Mr. French has a comment?
No, I do not. No, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Jeff could bring up the plans, slides for this. So on January 28, 2019, the council passed an ordinance rezoning this site. It's currently HI zoning. The ordinance rezoned the site, it was conditional to PDI Planned Development Industrial District. It's a 36-acre site, you can see in the aerial there. North side of Gerler, about 500 feet east of South First Street. I think a few were on the commission when this went through the first time. And the rezoning was contingent upon the approval within one year of a solar energy generation facility on, that was planned for lots one and two. There was a kind of a plan, there was a plan approved with it by Sunvest Solar. It's contingent upon them getting approval by the state, which they did attempt to and did not receive. And then the ordinance allowed a, a extension to be granted if requested. And the council did do that via resolution on January 27, 2020, for one year. And they did not get the extension or get the approval by the state. There was delays with COVID. So after that, there was no further extensions allowed in the ordinance. It was meant to revert back to the HI zoning. So, and talking to Mr. Planey over the last month or so, he wanted to amend that agreement to keep it open for the solar energy facility, if it was eventually approved, but allow it on any of the three lots on the site, not just lots one or two, because the current agreement restricted it to lots one and two only. So he wants that ability to open that, and probably most importantly, open it up to the other HI uses. So the current agreement, he could only do HI permitted or special uses on the lot three, which is at the north end of the site off of First Street. And lots two, one and two were strictly reserved for the solar garden. So he wants to just make it more flexible, have any HI use, and the solar farm as a permitted within those three lots. So that's the, pretty much the main part of the amendment. So we did look at the agreement, too. We did remove some things out of there that already refer back to the municipal code. That agreement is attached there. So it removes a one-year time limit, opens up the uses under the HI zoning, including the solar garden, if that is ever approved by the state. The same plans are approved if they do do that, solar development within two years. There's a two-year timeframe on these, so if they do not get that, those plans that are in the ordinance expire. They can get a one-year extension if so approved by the council. The fees stay the same. The water main cost responsibilities, which was spelled out there, Mr. Planey talked a little bit about, that stays the same. There's no change of that. The amendments, there were some waivers that were approved for the solar garden. Those remain in place if that is built. So that's the key. This wants to open up a little more flexibility. There's no proposed development planned at this time. If they do, they'll have to come back through the city and get, you know, appropriate approval through the parties. We did get one comment, public input, from Elizabeth Beller, representing Oak Properties. They own property on the west side of South First Street, across from Harvester Drive, up in this area, indicating support of the rezoning. And that is the only public comments we did receive. So there's a sample motion recommending approval of the rezoning, contingent upon the planned development agreement, the first amendment, which is attached in your packet as Exhibit A.
Thank you, Dan. Again, anyone that, from the public that would like to speak to this, please come forward, state your name and address. If not? If not, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to comments from the commission. Any comments or questions?
Well, I was going to ask what, I, I was thinking of calling you Gary Lotzen, because I saw you guys own the property right next to it and how you felt about it.
You want to get the mic?
I guess this is kind of.
Get the mic, Gary, so I can hear you, yeah.
I'm not grilling you. It was just, since I know you, I thought, since you're the neighbor.
Right, I'm Gary Lotzen. I live and own the property directly to the south. My wife Pam is here with me. We're here mostly to fact-finding.
Okay, that's fair.
And as far as, you know, I know that's going to eventually be something there besides a piece of farmland. It is within the city of Decalb. I do think that if you look to the city's comprehensive plan from like 2003 or '04, they had our farm as some form of residential. It's never been zoned into the city. We're directly to the west of the South Point Development and the Notre Dame School Facility or St. Mary's School Facility. So I don't know how, if my farm became residential, how that would fit with more HI in the area.
We're actually going to be mending the comp plan this year, which is overdue, and probably be taking out a lot of residential that was planned.
Seems like Decalb's got.
So that's something we're going to be jumping into this year. The commission will be involved with that, too.
Right.
Yeah, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, that's okay.
Since you guys are right there.
Right, right. No, I'm just an interested adjoining property owner.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks. Yeah, I mean, it, it pretty much seemed like it was just a modification of the agreement that was already in place for the last couple of years.
Right.
The only thing that really changed was allowing all three parcels to be part of different kinds of development.
Yeah, allowing all three lots to have the solar garden.
Yeah.
Probably most importantly, allowing all three lots to have the uses in the HI district that permitted in special. Because that was only limited to lot three.
Okay.
In the current agreement. So it opens up to all three lots.
Okay.
Since the solar garden didn't get approved by the state, the owner wanted some flexibility to get some other, potential other HI uses in there.
Yes.
And it would be nice to see the state approve that at some point.
Yes. And it may, it may occur.
Which leads to my question, is there activity going on in that? Yeah, this is Bill French with Sunvest Solar. Yeah, there are, there are some discussions going down and, going on in Springfield. As you know, this was all part of the original Future Energy Jobs Act. And it was a very successful program. All the money that had been allocated was used up. So that's why, that's why this project hadn't moved forward yet. And they did in a lottery system, so it was just a random pick on which projects were going to get built. So we, we're hoping for is that future legislation, which we believe will either happen late this spring or in the summer, will either amend the Future Energy Jobs Act or will create a new program for future development of things, projects such as this, whether it's solar or wind or other renewable energy projects. So we're pretty hopeful that, that something's going to, to be moving forward here in the spring or early summer.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Jim Planey here. As my family having ownership of this parcel, I can assure you that we would be very happy to see a solar farm there. I've got three children in their 30s, and they're very interested in this type of development, as I am also. So we've extended our agreement with Sunvest for another year, hoping this can be brought to fruition.
Good to know. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, if not, I'll ask for a motion.
I can read it. Based on the submitted petition and testimony presented, I move the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to the City Council approval of a zoning map amendment to the HI Heavy Industrial District to the PD1 Planned Development Industrial District for the subject site, and the approval of the first amendment to the planned development agreement approved by the ordinance 2019-002, as indicated on Exhibit A to the staff report.
And I'll ask for, so move by Klein, I'll ask for a second. Second by Wright, roll call.
Becker?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
O'Flaherty?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Pena Graham?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Chair Maxwell?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim and Glenn. Yeah. Thank you both.
Any reports from staff?
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, just a couple of quick items. Next meeting is March 1 for the commission. Two hearings scheduled, the one for US Cellar on the Taylor Street Plaza, the 16-story high-rise on East Taylor Street. They have equipment up there, and they got a special use in 2017. We had them come in, they were proposing some upgrades. They didn't get a special use prior to that, so we had them come in, get a special use. They didn't do the work. And after two years of special use permit, if work doesn't start after two years of a special use approval, that goes away. It's kind of voided out. They have to come back, which they are doing. So also to note there, too, and we did with T-Mobile, who may be coming back on that site there to expansion of equipment, we advise them to take a look at, I think a few were on the commission where we talked about this concealment tape or reflective tape on the antenna to help reflect it, instead of kind of visually seeing the antenna sticking out. So they are open to that and probably proposing that. Second hearing is a couple of text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance. One is the, or the, relates to the TFR two-family district and multifamily district, where we're going to clear up the language and allow as a special use request, a particular development or lot, probably going to occur when it's in existing, but if they don't have the minimum lottery required, based on the number of units they're proposing. So that'd be a special use request. The language is, and the MFR two district allows that a variant, or a, it's not a variance, but a special use for that particular type of request, minimum lottery, but TFR and MFR one, it does not. So we want to clear up that language and allow those. We have a couple of cases in the city where that would apply. They haven't come forward yet with the zoning, but we want to get the text amendment in place just to allow that as a possibility. So, because with the minimum lottery, you can apply for a variance, but you can only reduce that minimum lottery by 20%. So this would be a tool available to someone. These are going to probably come in case where it's a legal non-conforming use, and they want to establish maybe two units in there that were in there before, but they don't have the minimum lottery. So we do have quite a few lots in the city that are smaller, that are older and smaller, and just not large enough to accommodate this. So we thought by doing that, that would open it up, keep the special use, a public hearing, neighbors are notified, so if there's any issues with that, we become aware of. So. I think from the council, they'll have, next week, they'll have two items for tonight, and also, I think I mentioned last time, are the continuation of the special use permit for 1030 East Locust. That was a parking lot for Naring Electric. There's been a couple of concerns related to more of the truck traffic, semi-traffic, but that's up for second reading next Monday night in front of the City Council. So that's all I had. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Any other comments or questions with that? I'll ask, before I say, before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I'll say congratulations to Mr. McMahon, and thank you. Motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Motion by McMahon?
I second.
Seconded by O'Flaherty. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. And thank you very much.